Call to order the February 20th meeting of the Cary Town Council. And at this time, I'll recognize Councilmember Robinson for the ceremonial opening.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you for everyone for coming to our council meeting. Ooh, we have mood lighting. You know, I just want to say before we pledge allegiance to the flag and give somebody an opportunity to turn the lights back on, what an extraordinary staff we have, such extraordinary group of people. I have been reminded this week of how incredibly giving everybody is and how we pull together as a community. And I just want to thank all of our staff members for everything that they do in and out of work because they are definitely an extraordinary group of people. I got a little personal fight. All right, on that note, let's go ahead and pledge our allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There we go.
And with that, the lights are back.
Should we do it again?
Yeah.
First order of business is to adopt the agenda. Do I hear a motion to do so?
So moved. Second?
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. We now move to recognitions, reports, and presentations. We do have special guests in our audience. Mark Andrew of Troop 152 is earning his citizenship and community badge. Will you stand up and be recognized? Thank you for being here. And now I'll turn it over to our town manager for his update, Mr. Steagle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank everyone for coming out in these dangerous conditions this evening, tongue in cheek. In my July update to the council, I talked about the tremendous number of negative impacts that we were experiencing throughout Cary because of fiber optic installation. As you know, North Carolina law doesn't give cities a lot of tools to make a difference in these matters. Still, things have gotten better thanks to dogged determination and perseverance. And I'd like to ask Brian Hayes to come to the podium. I like the suit. So council, I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Dogged Determination and Perseverance, better known around Town Hall as Brian Mays Hayes. For the last 14 years, Brian has worked in our real-time traffic center. But in November, Brian became Cary's first right-of-way coordinator, and his impact has been incredible. Brian is so gifted when it comes to interacting with people. He's just one of those people that makes everyone feel good, and we've put that gift to great use. Every day, Brian is focused on addressing citizen questions and complaints, most of which he gets through our new 3-1-1 system. He responds quickly and treats each situation uniquely. Brian is also a lifelong resident of Cary. I'd like to ask him to share a few words and talk about how he's going about his new duties.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Yeah, we're just getting started with the process. So far, we've made an impact on several people in Cary. The 3-1-1 center is, that has been a godsend, really. Everything coming into 3-1-1 Center is, you know, anything dealing with the fiber installation, utilities, anything with the right-of-way, they've been able to get with me and the citizens' names and numbers. You know, I think the main thing is, is if we give them a call and just put a voice with it and talk to them, they're really, you know, happy with that. Just explaining the whole process, what we're trying to do here, trying to eliminate any issues in the future. Also, Salesforce has been a big thing for us. We can update tickets, you know, through Salesforce and any complaints that are happening, you know, come through there. And so, yeah, it's been really well. We're not quite there yet, but we're getting there. It, you know, over, I'd say, the next six months, we'll make some big improvements. Yeah.
So for all of our citizens watching, if you have any issues with utility companies, call Brian Hayes.
That's right. And I think they all have.
And with that, I think that smile will make them much, much better.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah. But do you have any questions for me, or?
No, I appreciate all you do because by the time I get them, they're pretty upset. And so then I give them to you, and you got to handle that. Everyone I've punted on so far, they've been resolved and they've been not unhappy.
Yes.
I don't know if they've gone to happy, but they're not unhappy. So that's a big achievement.
Sure. And like I said, if you just give them a little bit of attention, you know, and they deserve that, you know. We're trying our best to, you know, keep Cary, you know, aesthetically the way it has been. And, you know, as long as you show them that attention, you know, they're really happy with that. So.
Well, thank you.
Mayor, the last thing I'd say about it is, I think this demonstrates, even in those areas that aren't under our direct jurisdictional control, just by offering to listen and to help and facilitate, we can make a big difference. So I think something that's happening in Cary, we either have a direct role in helping make it better or a secondary role, but we can make a difference.
Amen. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Come back and see us sometime.
I think it's important also to use every opportunity to remind people about 3-1-1. It's new. It's not like a natural thing yet for a lot of people to think about. But if you have any questions about what's going on in Cary, if you call 3-1-1, number one, your call is documented, recorded, and given a ticket. And two, so it doesn't get lost in, you know, the great unknown out there. And you don't have to be careful, like, am I calling the right place, the right department, or so forth. Take advantage of 3-1-1, and we're still in the learning curve there. So don't be shy if you have some feedback for us on your experience utilizing 3-1-1.
And Don and I actually toured the 3-1-1 Center this week. And one of the things that's coming out of that that's going to be really useful is the data collected. Not that we're doing Big Brother, but the data collector will show us where we need to pay our attention, what we need to focus on. And so if you're getting calls all the time on this one area or this one thing, then we need to focus on that and resolve those issues. So, yeah. Burning question, 3-1-1. Burning building, 9-1-1. All right, we'll move to a third item on the agenda, is Public Speaks Out. The next agenda item, we've included instructions for speaking on your printed agenda. And if you'd like to speak, I'd ask that you sit in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved and follow the instructions on the agenda. Speakers have up to three minutes for their comments, and they may speak on any topic as long as it's not a public hearing, and that works to your advantage since you get more time to speak at a public hearing. There's a timer on the podium to mark those three minutes. And when it turns from a green to a flashing yellow light, that means you have 30 seconds remaining. And then when it turns to a flashing red light, your time is up. And at that point, I'll interrupt you, not trying to be rude, but trying to be fair to all of our speakers. I would ask that if you're here with a group, have a spokesperson for the group to make repetitive comments minimal and to have a more efficient meeting. And if you would like to speak next, I would ask that you stand over in the stairway to let us know we have another speaker and to keep Public Speaks Out moving quickly. I thank everyone in the audience for understanding that this is a business meeting. Please do not applaud, make remarks from your seats, or anything else that may distract from this meeting. So now's the time for Public Speaks Out, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
My name is George McDowell, and thank you for not canceling the meeting tonight. May it please your honor, esteemed members of council, Mr. Steagle, Ms. Simpson, and Ms. Johnson, how easy it is to stand here for three minutes and tell you what you should do, then sit down, fold one's arms, and wait impatiently for you to get to work. This is one of the reasons, I suspect, that you get the big money. I respectfully suggest this is what you could do. Rebrand the town campus and incorporate the word arboretum in that rebranding. Preliminary Internet research suggests that you would be the first city, state, or national legislative body in the world to have headquarters located on ground purposely planted and intended so to be an official arboretum. Nature and Town staff have already done 95% of the work necessary to allow the campus to be legitimately deemed an arboretum. Amy McIntosh planted 13 Dawn Redwood trees just north of the police station in 2001. These trees, an endangered species, grow very tall and flourish in what I believe to be the second-largest grove of any endangered tree species in North Carolina. Kevin Steed explained that the tree that grows just south and east of the Page Walker Arts and History Center is either a first- or second-generation descendant of the Henry Clay oak that lived in Raleigh from 1782 to 1991. Mr. Steed plants a ceremonial tree each year in celebration of Arbor Day. Many are planted on campus. The cellphone app being refined by Reed Sarosi can be adapted to give the species history and other information about the trees on campus. The four to five acres north and east of the parking deck, the area bounded by Wilkinson Avenue and East Durham Road is not tended. On it, in addition to a number of ubiquitous pine trees, sit scores of tall and magnificent oaks, maples, hickories, and a couple of cedars. To incorporate this area into the arboretum, you need only send in a landscaping crew to rip down the wisteria and ivy that is pulling down the big trees, cut down the scrub bushes, restore the stream bed, and throw down a couple hundred tons of ground-up tree mulch. For this relatively minuscule investment, you will increase and enhance the beauty of both the campus and the town in general, provide yet another amenity for citizens and their visitors to enjoy, reap millions of dollars worth of positive publicity, and truly warm the hearts of the large and growing number of voters who appreciate and reward environmental sensitivity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDowell. Very interesting.
That's a great idea.
Yeah. Next speaker, please.
Hi. My name is Nick Barisso. I thought I got five minutes, so I'll try to make it quick. I'm asking the town council to consider the following prior to the sale of the land surrounding the parking deck identified as Academy Park.
I'm going to interrupt you. You do get five minutes. That's a public hearing, and it's coming up.
Oh.
So if you hang on just a little while, we'll get there shortly.
Okay.
Okay? Next speaker for Public Speaks Out. Anybody to speak on anything that's not a public hearing. All right, we'll close Public Speaks Out, and we'll move to our fourth item, which is the consent agenda. And for the benefit of people watching our meeting on TV, I'm going to go over the consent agenda items. Keep in mind that one vote approves all consent agenda items. On the consent agenda, we have minutes, 19A17 Pendergraph Evangelist Hilliard Impressor Annexation, 19REZ24 Carpenter Village PDD Amendment, bid award for the Holt Road to Davis Drive waterline project, bid award for the 2020 Water Main Replacement Project, Clean Fuel Advanced Technology Grant. Would council members like any of these items pulled for discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved. Second? There's a motion and a discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. And that takes us to public hearings. Same rules apply for public hearings. The apply for Public Speaks Out with one change. You now have five minutes for your comments. And our first public hearing is for 19A10 Young Emerson and Hill Annexation. And Planner Erin Puckett will introduce the hearing. Council will not take action on this item tonight, but it will return to us at a future meeting. Ms. Puckett?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This request is for annexation of two parcels totaling approximately 91 acres located at 10201 and 10209 Morrisville Parkway, approximately 500 feet west of the Morrisville Parkway and Ferson Road intersection. As you may recall, a public hearing for the associated rezoning case on this property was held at your January 9th meeting. The property is contiguous to the town's corporate limits but is outside of Cary's ETJ, with portions of the assemblage located in both Wake and Chatham Counties. The Wake County portion is zoned Residential 40 watershed, and the Chatham County portion is zoned Residential 1. Since the applicant wishes to develop the site under Cary zoning and regulations, it is necessary to bring the property into the town limits and establish a Cary zoning designation. In conjunction with the annexation, the previously mentioned rezoning request for the property has also been submitted. A public hearing was conducted last month, and the case was forwarded to the Planning and Zoning Board for their review. The proposed zoning would increase the permitted residential density above that allowed under the current zoning, potentially allowing for up to 190 detached dwellings on just over 91 acres. Following the public hearing on the annexation, no action by council is needed this evening. The petition will be placed on a future meeting agenda so that action may coincide with final action on the associated rezoning request. This concludes staff's presentation, and following the public hearing, we're available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Puckett. Now's the time for the public hearing for 19A10 Young Emerson and Hill Annexation, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions or comments. Seeing none, we'll see this at a future meeting. And we'll move to our second item, which is 19A18 Colonial Baptist Church of Cary Incorporated Annexation. And once again, Ms. Puckett will introduce the item, and council may take action on this annexation tonight. Ms. Puckett?
Thank you. This next request is for annexation of two properties totaling approximately 4.3 acres located on Tryon Road approximately 1,500 feet west of Holly Springs Road. The properties are contiguous to the existing corporate limits, and they are located within Cary's ETJ and currently zoned Residential 8. The area proposed for annexation is not currently associated with a rezoning or development plan request. The owner has indicated that they are seeking annexation in order to facilitate development of the property in the future and understands that development plan approval will be needed for any development of this property. Following the public hearing on the annexation, town council may take action on the request this evening. This concludes staff's presentation, and again, following the public hearing, we're available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Puckett. Now's the time for the public hearing for 19A18 Colonial Baptist Church of Cary Incorporated Annexation, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions, comments, or a motion. Make a motion to approve annexation 19A18.
Second?
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Puckett. We now move to our third public hearing. It's item 19REZ16 Silverton PDD Amendment Parcel G O and I portion. Assistant Planning Director Deborah Grantan will introduce the item. Council will not take action on this rezoning tonight, but it will be referred to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation, and returned to council at a future meeting. Ms. Grant?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. For your consideration is a request to rezone approximately 2.25 acres located at 1,700 Evans Road. The subject property is located at the intersection of Evans Road and Northwest Cary Parkway. If the site looks familiar, you may recall that in 2017, you approved a rezoning for the Walton Wood Development in close proximity to the site. The site is not impacted by any stream buffers or floodways according to Cary's most recent GIS maps, and it has frontage on Northwest Cary Parkway and Evans Road, both of which are thoroughfares. Cary Parkway is improved to its ultimate cross-section, and Evans Road has a future cross-section for a three-lane median divided roadway, six lanes ultimately. According to Cary's Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources master plan, there is a future street-side trail required along the North Cary Parkway frontage of the subject property. And the existing zoning on the property is planned development district major, PDD. The Silverton PDD originated back in 1987, so it's seen some changes over the years. And the property is also located within a mixed-use overlay district. When this site was first approved and developed in 1987, this small parcel was part of a larger parcel, Parcel G, and it was designated for office and institutional uses. And then in 1992, Parcel G was rezoned to allow multifamily residential. So you're familiar with the Marquee at Silverton. This little piece was left over and maintained that O and I zoning designation. O and I zoning remained in place for the properties to the south, where there's a small daycare and an office site. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the Walton Wood Development was a combination of an assisted living and senior living facility, and then the associated multifamily residential. So what we have left now is this small subject property that still has that O and I designation on it. And because it's in that mixed-use overlay district, as part of the requested amendment, the applicant had to submit a preliminary development plan, which they have done with the requested use to go from office and institutional to residential. They've proposed a maximum of 60 multifamily residential units with a maximum building height of 55 feet. They've proposed a minimum of 50% masonry on all applicable facades. They've proposed 1,200 square feet of community gathering space, which is double the LDO requirement. They've proposed structured parking below the building. They've proposed 20-foot Type B perimeter buffers. And they've proposed to increase the planting standard for trees in the streetscape. Our ordinance calls for an eight-foot minimum height at the time of planting, and they're proposing a 10-foot minimum height for the understory trees. And they've also proposed a public art feature, which has been vetted and approved by our Public Art Advisory Board. As part of the PDD process, the applicant also has the opportunity to ask for modifications to LDO standards. They're proposing a parking standard of 1.77 spaces per dwelling unit. They're proposing a 30-foot wide streetscape on Northwest Cary Parkway. The LDO would typically call for a 30-foot streetscape. And they've proposed a 20-foot wide streetscape on Evans Road. Staff would like to make a couple observations about the streetscape. There's some utility easements in this vicinity, that street-side trail that I mentioned earlier, the standard being typically 50 feet. We brought to the applicant's attention our concerns about this, and then they did respond by pointing out the public art feature that they're offering. And they also pointed out, too, the 50% masonry requirement. The standard is 35%. So they'll speak to this when they come up, you know, during their time, and they'd like to hear from you your thoughts on this. It is a deviation from what we've seen in the past, but it's a more urban look. It's a more urban feel to this type of dwelling unit, not the garden-style apartments that we've seen in the past, but something pulled up closer to the street. So, you know, early in the process, they'd like to hear feedback and your observations on this. The subject property is located within an employment mixed-use campus according to Cary's Growth Framework Map in the Imagine Cary Community Plan. So typically, what you'd look for in this designation is a mixture of office and residential uses in a walkable community, in a walkable campus. That's kind of hard to achieve on 2.25 acres. So what we've done is we've taken a look more at the overall, you know, use in this vicinity and done a preliminary analysis and noted that the live, work, and shape chapters are most applicable to this request. It does provide more housing choices, more options for different variety with housing and neighborhood and mixed-use center. It would help provide housing and thus support a sustainable workforce and support the locational needs of new businesses. But it doesn't offer another office use category or commercial use category. And with the shape chapter, we do look for developing more dense uses at strategic locations in mixed-use developments. And this transition is something that could be good with the existing residential multifamily next to two thoroughfares. We were concerned about the streetscape reduction, but then the added conditions about the masonry on the fronts of the buildings and the art feature could help to enhance the attractiveness. So early in the process, these are initial observations, and we'd like to, you know, monitor it as it goes through the process. And as I mentioned, when you look at the employment mixed-use campus, if you look at the overall area and take into consideration the amount of existing office that's in place currently, you can see how this is just a relatively small piece of that and how it fits in. So we've got a lot of existing industrial, existing multifamily, single-family detached. So this does add, it does add another multifamily unit, but when you take into consideration the entire area, it doesn't tip the balance too far. We had a community meeting here at Town Hall on September 4th. There were nine people in attendance. The questions pertain to parking, traffic, and the large amount of multifamily uses in the area. While it may not seem like a large amount, they've all come at relatively short period of time. So we have seen them happen pretty quickly within the last few years. We've had one phone call from just an individual seeking additional information about the case, and then a second phone call from a nearby resident who was expressing a preference for retail or service locations that they could walk to. We sent notification to property owners within 800 feet of the subject property, and as you know, this exceeds the state and LDO standards, and the property was posted. This concludes staff's presentation, and the applicant is present. Following their comments in the public hearing, we'll be available for your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. At this time, I would invite the applicant forward for their remarks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm Jamie Schwadler with Parker Poe at 301 Fayetteville Street, here on behalf of the applicant's Singh Development. Deborah did a great job in summarizing this request, and how the 100-acre parcel really fits into the overall 450-acre original designation in Silverton PDD. As she explained, that PDD was originally adopted in 1987 and has been modified three times to adapt to changing market conditions, the most recent example being the Walton Wood across the street. And we see this minor modification as just an addition of additional residential product types to complete that mix. What we have across the street is a continuing care and some multifamily. This is a much more reduced area of just 60 multifamily units, which is a much smaller scale than many of the proposals you've seen. And it's also going to be age-targeted, not age-restricted, but age-targeted to complete that product mix on what is now a kind of a completion of that corner. As Deborah noted, the request includes just 60 multifamily units, a height limitation, as well as the town's material standards, which we think is important to have that increase from 35% masonry to 50% on all applicable facades. Because this is a PDP, we also had to look at how we were treating stormwater, and we've anticipated doing that in an underground facility. We've also included a minimum 35-foot setback of buildings from both Evans Road and Cary Parkway. And to speak to the two modifications you heard, we are seeking that modification of the 1.77 spaces per unit for a parking reduction. But we're also balancing that with the structured parking. There'll be podium parking that's underneath the building, so you won't see it as easily from the road, and you'll have the surface parking tucked behind the building to kind of screen. So the first thing you'll see is the streetscape and then the masonry with the parking underneath. And that allows us to kind of frame that corner, and as Deborah mentioned, create a much more urban corner with a different type of streetscape, a different type of look that's punctuated by a public art piece. We think that really adds to the value of the character of the corner and balances out the requests and deviations that we're seeking tonight. Along with that 30-foot streetscape reduction, I think it's important to note that on page two of your staff report, there's an insert showing what the original streetscapes were along Cary Parkway. And in fact, this parcel and the parcel to the north, which was now the Marquee, even though that has become developed with residential, that original streetscape was designated for a 30-foot streetscape. So today, your LDO... So today, your LDO would require 50, but at the time this was created, that entire corridor was 30, which suggests that the intent was really more of an appearance standard and not more of screening the residential use. And so we think what we're doing is consistent with that original intent. But also, to mitigate that request, we are beefing up the height of the installed plantings. We are averaging the buffer so that we can accommodate that utility easement in the streetscape. We're also putting 20-foot type-B buffers along the rear side, so the north and the east where no buffers are required. So what we're doing is kind of borrowing a little bit from the streetscape and adding it to the rear so that the property is fully buffered around where we're not required to do that. And all of those conditions really make this much more consistent with the future growth framework map, which calls for multifamily as one of the uses mixed throughout. Your staff report notes that although the PDD is mostly built out, it's about 60% non-residential and only 32% residential. So we're talking about a very minimal increase in an area that's already predominantly non-residential. And it's also important to note that while this was designated office at one time, since you all have adopted the Imagine Cary Plan and adopted the Office Suitability Map, this site was not identified as a prime spot for office or secondary office use, which just reflects the changing nature of the times. And so for those reasons, we think this is, with those committed elements, it brings it much more in line with what Cary's needs are today and makes this consistent with the Cary Community Plan, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. So now's the time for the public hearing for 19 RZ16 Silverton PDD Amendment Parcel G O-N-I portion. Speaker, forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for comments, questions.
Questions.
Sure.
Okay. First of all, I want to say I do like the structured parking. That's fantastic. I'm very happy with that. The term "applicable facades" was used several times. What is an applicable facade?
Anything that you can see from Cary Parkway or Evans Road. That would be including, you know, the ends.
So basically, everything except for the northeast-facing.
Internal to the site.
Internal to the site. Okay. And they're not making any conditions there? Is that 35% required on those, or is there no requirement on those?
It's not required. The masonry's not required, but we can ask them if they want to do it, extend the masonry.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not asking them to do anything in particular, but I will express that if you're going to say that you're an urban look and feel, and then, you know, you don't want it to be just on the front sides, you don't want to go around the corner and go, "Oh, yeah, it's just deciding, you know, it doesn't look as good on the inside." So I think it should be, I think it should look good all around. The buffer, the type-B buffer around the surrounding community? I think that would be good to be a type-A buffer, because those are neighborhoods over there. There's people who live there, and they're going to be looking at a parking lot. And so I think a type-A would be a big plus. And then, what is the standard? I mean, we heard a couple of times, 1.77. Parking units, parking spaces per dwelling unit, what is the standard?
The LDO standard would be 2.25 for two-bedroom or one-bedroom units, and 2.5 for anything with three bedrooms or greater.
Okay. Do we have a sense, like, just averaging it out, how many parking spots? We're talking about difference?
I'll get that for you. We'll put that in the staff report.
And sort of following up on that, because it is related, what is targeted age or whatever?
That's a marketing term, but it would not be a zoning condition unless they specifically offered...
Is there anything enforceable with it?
No, it's not enforceable.
Okay, so that's just a marketing term? Okay, got it.
I have a couple of questions. Is this going to be part of or related to the development across the street?
The applicant, at this point, is the same, but that's not a condition that would run with the land. So the ownership is not anything that would be a zoning condition.
So my concerns are, if it is, then it could be likely that you have a number of seniors crossing six, you know, lanes of traffic, and it's already quite difficult. Are there any transportation, obviously considerations associated with this?
And the applicant can certainly speak to whether or not they're proposing anything above and beyond, but they've not offered any zoning conditions related to that. This did not warrant a traffic study because of the small number of units.
Right. So that would be of interest to me to know, as this moves forward, what that looks like? Because that is not a very pedestrian-friendly intersection.
Can I follow up on that, though? In that cross-section, six lanes. Why is that six lanes?
Six lanes on Evans.
Six lanes on Evans, yeah.
I guess my question, though, if it had, would develop as office or if it were developed as commercial or retail, you would still also have seniors and others crossing the street?
Possibly, but if it, you know, if it's a senior community, I just think of where I happen to live, in Carolina Reserve, people walk to the, you know, across the street, they have a community center, they've got 1,200 square feet of community space. If they're going to be part of the same community, they're going to walk across the street to go to those much more often than you would walk, you know, to go to the doctor maybe once every three months. You might go back and forth to dinner every day, right? That was just my, you know, my consideration of what would that look like? If it's part of the same community, then, you know, maybe it warrants, you know, better pedestrian lighting there, you know? Maybe it needs a, you know?
I agree. I mean, and one comment that we've gotten from people who live in this area is how difficult it is to be walkable here in the whole Cary Parkway Weston area, you know, with Cary Parkway the sidewalk dying, you know, just stopping there. And I know we're going to resolve that, but there's a lot of issues here. Like, I was riding my bike with my kids down Cary Parkway once, and you go a certain distance, then it stops, and you have to literally cross Cary Parkway to get over to the other side where the sidewalk picks up.
Crossover.
Yeah, it's really kind of, it's a bad pedestrian corridor. So I do think that we should be looking at those crossings, especially when we put in six-lane roads. I don't know if the citizens know this, but we have very limited places where we allow six-lane roads. There was a time where we contemplated trying to cap that and not have six-lane roads at all, because they become barriers. So if any place where we have a six-lane road, we should be looking for provisions for safe crossings.
My only other thought is that I actually like the art feature, and especially since that is where the greenways are, it's right along the greenway, so that's nice. I always hate it when you put a art structure, they have to, like, go off the beaten path to go look at. So I actually don't mind it there. I think it gives some interest to that corner. It would be great if the, as they move forward, if they could look at some affordability and some affordable units. I mean, that is a perfect place for it. We're just throwing out our respective thoughts.
They're addressing affordability by increasing supply.
Well, and they're increasing supply, and that's great, but we're also not sticking to, if this were to go through, we're not sticking to the 50-foot streetscape there. So they, so it's a, you know, a pull-push, however you might want to say it. So there's a little bit of give and take there. And then, the only other thing was, I would love to know the actual amount of spaces that they're asking for a reduction rather than the number that you brought that up.
It looked like it's 29-ish.
No, did you just do it?
Yeah, I just did it. So can I follow up on that point? You know, when we're asked to do a parking reduction, we're doing it completely in the dark, because we have zero idea whether or not it has merit. And we all have been to friends' places, you know, the townhome community where you can't find a parking spot nearby. I haven't really seen it in apartment complexes, but this is some, this is an opportunity that I really think we should address with technology. We have the drones, we have ESRI, we have SAS analytics. You know, we should be able to go up over our apartment complexes in this whole vicinity and take snapshots four times a day, and then analyze it and be able to say, do we have, when we have reductions, how many spots do we really need? I mean, we just don't know this. So, I mean, I think that we should really analyze this so that we're not continually making a decision in the dark. I mean, I'd hate to be the council that keeps giving parking waivers and then find out that, you know, people are stressed and can never get a parking spot. My daughter lives in Southern Pines, can never get a parking spot. We went out to dinner, and she said, "We have to get back quickly, or else I'm never going to be able to get a place to park." So I don't want us to be that. So we should be using our technology to look into this. And I don't know that we can do that before we make a decision on this, but going forward, this is like probably the fourth one that we've been faced with within a couple of years.
Well, that's what I was going to ask. I mean, is the reduction per unit, I mean, is this consistent with what we have been approving here lately?
We frequently, frequently see requests, especially if there's one-bedroom units for a reduction. Cary has some of the highest parking requirements for multifamily, and we have budgeted for a parking study, so we're preparing to do that. You've never done a reduction for parking requirements for single-family residential, and you've stopped doing reductions for townhomes, because we've had a hard time enforcing that and heard the complaints. So this is about the only time you see it, is when you've got something that can be managed by the property management company. So it does have a lot of self-regulation. We don't get a lot of complaints about parking for apartments, because if people are dissatisfied, they won't continue to park or to live there. But we are still going to do a parking study, because we do see so many requests for this.
Are you going to apply that to also commercial properties? Because I think we overpark...
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Our commercial properties, like, you know, Harris Teeter and Target, no matter what time of day you go, there's always too many spots.
We're also seeing a lot of requests for reductions for office and commercial properties here lately, too.
Right.
And I think that is largely because...
But, yeah, we have seen, you're right, we've seen that. And I remember before the meeting, you know, it said parking 1.77 spaces. We took out the word "reduction," because I thought, oh, they're going to say, "Here we go again, another request for a reduction." But it's true. It's almost every multifamily project that comes before you, the applicants have asked for that anytime it's in a PDD or MXD zoning. They have the opportunity to set their own standards and can ask for what they feel is going to work for them and provide the justification for it. But we are, we are working on that study, so...
That's good, because we haven't seen a lot of those actually be built to fruition. I mean, a lot of them are still under construction or development, you know, so we don't really know what, the impact of what we've done.
Right.
Yeah.
And just to follow up on Harold's question, if we're going to, if they're going to use the term "age-targeted," I'd like to have a condition, right? Or don't use the term at all, because I think it confuses, doesn't confuse us, but, you know, it's possible it might confuse planning and zoning board or other folks. So if you're going to say it, put it as a condition.
Other comments?
Yeah, just comments. I generally like the proposal. I would agree with your comments wholeheartedly regarding affordability. You know, the great thing about Cary is one of the most desirable places to live in America, so there's a huge demand for housing. We have a lack of supply. That lack of supply is driving up the cost of housing in Cary and resulting in houses becoming even more and more unaffordable. So you could have 60 new families or individuals moving into this, you know, or they can buy a house in a subdivision somewhere else. The advantage to something like this is obviously the, less of an impact on the environment. You know, you're putting 60 people on, or 60 units on two acres of land versus 60 single-family homes and large lots and those kinds of things. They're doing underground stormwater retention and things like that, the community gathering space and others. So I think it's got a benefit to help, help, not solve our supply issue, affordability, and better protect the environment. I think it's entirely compatible with what's around it. It's going up next against an existing apartment complex that has similar buffers. I would tend to agree with your comment regarding the perimeter buffer, though. If we can do something to beef that up to protect those on the other side, I think that's, that's a good thing to do. While it's not a condition and we can't always consider who the applicant is with the project, obviously Singh has committed to the other two quadrants. They've already developed other properties in Cary, they're developing in Raleigh, nationally-renowned company that has a reputation for building very high-quality projects. I know we're all familiar with Walton Wood on Cary Parkway, but they also just opened up Walton Wood on Lake Boone. Phenomenal, phenomenal project. I would love to see more of that here in Cary. I get the comment from the one citizen that would prefer a retail or some type of service use, but the property's currently zoned office, and they're asking for residential. We don't have, we're not getting the option of retail or commercial right now. I know that we don't always, rarely do we ever like flipping office property to residential. But on a 2.2-acre site, what meaningful office are you going to get anyway, other than maybe a little strip mall development or a doctor's office or something along those lines? So that's not too big a concern for me. So I love what I see. I also do love the art feature. They're also doing something very similar at the other two corners for their projects. I think when this area is developed out, it's going to have an amazing look and feel to it, and I think as people come through here, they're going to feel like they're in a very special place. And so, and I have all faith in the world and the applicant to make that happen. So those are my comments.
Some of the conditions are excellent. I don't like the reduction in the streetscape, the significant reduction. That troubles me a little bit. And I know it's only two and a quarter acres, but it's still office space, and just in general, not necessarily for this site, but in general, I don't like losing office space. Usually, when we've approved a few of those, and we have lately, there's been a compelling reason why office is just impossible to be built due to the topography or the access or something like that. I haven't heard a compelling reason at this point yet. But certainly, there are some good conditions to make up for some of it.
Yes, please.
You know, just, you know, I was thinking along those same lines, Ed, but, you know, when we showed the slide about the volume of office adjacent to it, you know, that, I'm not crazy about giving it up, but when I see the sheer volume around it and the size of this one, I'm trying to keep an open mind on it.
To follow up on Don's point, I agree that this proposal addresses housing affordability issue in Cary, and I like it that because there are so many young people, they want to move in Cary, and, you know, the houses are getting so expensive in Cary, and this will help address the issue. I mean, not that many 60 units, but...
Everybody counts.
Yeah, everybody, every unit counts. There's one family that, you know, who probably wouldn't be able to move into Cary, but they would be because of this project. And I like the public art feature a lot, and I like the community gathering space. Is that only accessible to folks who live there or also available to folks living...
It would be, it would be to this site. It would be private space, so it's not a public park.
Yeah. I like that feature, and structured parking, definitely a plus.
My comments, like a lot of what they proposed. I like the masonry, I like the structured parking. I agree with Jennifer. I'd like to see the type-A buffers along the back. And then I have general questions. I'm struggling with the use. If not office, what else could go there? Would retail be a better use? Would that serve the surrounding area better? Because there's really not a lot of retail there. Something that I'm going to think about. And then the other thing that really has got my attention is the intention of the Cary Community Plan, because this will complete a segment almost from Highway 54, past Evans Road of a line of apartments. And is that the intention of the Cary Community Plan? And I think at our retreat, we're going to talk about intentions and what the Cary Community Plan has done. But I'm just saying that, just so you know what I'm thinking. I think the proposal's a good proposal. I don't have any problem with the parking reduction. So I'm struggling with that. So I'm like Ed, I'm looking for the compelling reason. Is this the best we can do with this parcel? And if it is, then I think the proposal's good. If not, I might look for something else. So that's kind of where I am. Any other comments? As Deborah mentioned earlier, this is going to our planning and zoning board for their review and recommendation. We'll see this in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to our fourth and last public hearing, and it's a consideration downtown development agreement involving the sale of town property. And Manager Steegel's going to introduce the slide?
Yes.
Okay. And Economic Director Ted Boyd, excuse me, Ted Boyd will present the staff report, and council may take action. Mr. Steegel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You'll recall that we looked in detail at the Academy Park Project Proposal at your October work session, and a tremendous amount of effort on the implementation details has occurred since that time. This is a project that has actively been in the making at the staff level for about three years now, just following council's adoption of the community's vision for not only downtown, but all of Cary, as articulated in the Imagine Cary Community Plan. For the first major redevelopment project involving town-owned land, it was critical that we partner with people who have Cary in their blood, people who are committed to Cary as much as the town is. And I can say without hesitation that we made the right choice. They are bright, trusted partners with a proven track record, they understand the council's goals, and they are part of this community. They understand the council's goals and they are part of this community. I'll close with just one more point, and this is my thanks to the staff, especially Ted, Chris, and Lisa. I can't overstate just how complex and important it is to get a vision into Legalese that will stand the test of time, and they've done an amazing job. With that, I'll turn it over to Ted to introduce the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Stegall. Good evening, council. For your consideration tonight is a downtown development project agreement involving the sale of town property. The staff report and attached documents cover this agreement in great detail. And I'd like to highlight three areas, the background, the development commitments, and our next steps. I'd like to draw your attention to this image. It's a familiar image. We just started with it in our work session. But, the 2019 approved Downtown Park Master Plan. While this specific plan is not quite a year old, it represents almost 20 years of vision, studies, projects, updated plans, and decisions to arrive at the master plan we see today. I believe it's important for us to be reminded of some of the decisions and completed projects reflected in this plan. Our downtown revitalization efforts began with Town Council approved the Town Center Area Plan in 2001. This plan set the vision to make downtown a unique, vibrant, dynamic, pedestrian-friendly location with a focus of multi-level, mixed-use buildings so that downtown would include an exciting mix of shops, restaurants, entertainment, housing and offices, all within walking distance of transit. In 2004, the Town Center Area Plan Strategic Action Program resulted in preliminary concepts for the block bounded by Walker, Walnut, Park and Academy Street, which referenced as, which was referenced as an opportunity site. In 2006, the Town Center Civic and Cultural Arts Study illustrated some of the early concepts of this opportunity site and surrounding area. As you zoom in a little bit, you can see some familiar callouts with the 1C being the Cary Arts Center, the 5A being structured parking, 1B a town square, 4 being mixed-use development, and more park amenities in the 3B and the 3A. In 2011, we opened the Cary Arts Center. The following year, we established a downtown business improvement district to advance private development in downtown Cary. And in July of 2013, council adopted the Downtown Park Master Plan and design of the town square. In February of 2014, council finalized the location of the park and the property outside of the seven acres became available for other needs. And just to draw your attention to a few things, again, the consistency of parking, the structure within that, and kind of locating mixed-use development in that corner. You can see the, the town square taking shape. And I think an important note is seeing the water feature component, really the idea of the regional stormwater and how that could serve the entire block and the evolution of our, our thinking and values within that. The Academy Streetscape was, and Town Square were completed in 2017. And the start of that year, council adopted the Imagine Cary 2040 Community Plan. This plan identifies downtown Cary as a special planning area consisting of six subareas, identifying the area along Walnut and Walker as part of the South Academy Subarea. The Imagine Cary Plan identifies the area adjacent to the library and facing Walnut and Walker Street as appropriate for multi-story office, multifamily residential, and mixed-use buildings served by a central parking, a public parking structure. The Wake County Regional Library and Cary's parking deck were completed in 2019, which brings us back to the current Downtown Cary Park Master Plan also approved in 2019. The opportunities for private mixed-use facilities integrated with the public library, deck and park were recognized by staff. Private development groups indicated interest in working with Cary. Staff conducted interviews and selected the Academy Park Development Team. And to reiterate what Mr. Stegall shared in his opening remarks about this team, they possess the capacity to develop in a way that supports Cary's vision. They have the necessary relationships with financial institutions, general contractors, architects, and the like to develop and operate this project. And the creativity and problem-solving skills are there to be able to help this be achieved. And while the legal entities you see here are referenced in Academy Park Cary and Academy Park Commercial, they're comprised of three Cary families, the Stephenson's, the Zahn's, and the Keneers. They have strong ties and connections to Cary demonstrated both professionally and personally. And this project reflects a $68 million private investment in downtown Cary. I'd like to now highlight the development commitments. The master developer will purchase two lots, 2.382 acres around the deck, at the appraised value of $870,000. This appraisal factors the covenants, conditions, and restrictions that are included in the development agreement. And to highlight that a little bit, it's very important to note that the images that you see that go with that are part of those restrictions, that they don't just simply have the ability to build whatever they would like to build within that, within the rights. It is those images, those materials, those selections that we've, that we've gone through, additionally, working with them to restrict uses on the, the retail portion to make sure that they're active uses. So, even though they may have had the zoning authority within that, they've agreed to further restrictions for certain types of uses or to be able to work in coordination with certain pieces within that. The master developers will construct and operate a commercial building with 95,000 to 110,000 square feet of office and retail space. Construct and operate a 153-unit multifamily building with ground floor retail. They would construct the temporary stormwater device and pay $405,000 for use of the regional stormwater device. Construct new streetscape pathways and sidewalks. Pay recreation fund payments of $446,000 for all 153 units in the multifamily building and pay reservation fee, or pay the reservation fee of $225,000 annually for 250 parking spaces. Cary's commitments are credit for the temporary stormwater device that converts to the permanent device, which is approximately 265,000. So, as a reminder, this regional stormwater is on our property as at the park. The elements that they would be developing for the temporary erosion control device to develop are things that we would need to develop for the park. So, those elements that they put in that retain and carry over to the, the permanent are the elements that they would get that reimbursement for. They would get reimbursement for the public streetscape pathways and sidewalks for the public. And then, they would pay the development, pay the development fees other than the recreation fee, and that we would reserve 250 parking spaces. One point of note ancillary to this agreement, I just want to mention that we, that as a part of the approved bond project, that's, we, we have a project currently underway that was approved by the bonds. Said that wrong, sorry. But, it's a signalized intersection at both Walnut and Walker and an improved intersection at Kildare, Dry, and Walnut. So, that way, if you recall going at the last minute, you kind of have to turn, finally getting that approved or that, that turn lane as you're heading into downtown. So, those projects are already underway as a part of the approved bond project. The financial terms summary slide hopefully helped capture what I just walked through. This project is expected to have a significant effect on the revitalization of Cary's downtown. Cary's participation involves the development and construction of new public facilities and infrastructure, which is only a fraction of the total investment in the project. The project supports and advances the vision of the Business Improvement District and the Imagine Cary Community Plan and the steps council has taken thus far in developing the vision by creating an opportunity for mixed-use development that integrates and harmonizes with the library, deck, and park. The resolution attached to the staff report makes the required determinations and authorizes and approves the agreement and the appropriation expenditure of funds. And in terms of next steps, if approved, the Academy Park team in Cary will execute the agreement and close on the property this spring. Construction could begin late spring and early summer. This concludes my presentation. And following the public hearing, I'm happy to address any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd. Now's the time for the public hearing for the downtown development agreement involving the sale of town property. And I would invite back Mr. Barso. Thank you for waiting. Sorry to have to interrupt you earlier.
Oh, that's okay. I don't attend enough meetings to know how it plays out, so I apologize for interrupting earlier. I'm asking Town Council to consider the following prior to the sale of the land surrounding the parking deck identified as Academy Park. The latest available plan to the public from the developer shows less than 25% tree canopy cover, a move from two buildings to three, which is the minimum recommended by the EAB Board for a commercial district. Since this is not meeting the EAB recommendations, what green, green infrastructure elements on the site are being used to offset, offset the plan, plan's lack of tree canopy. Currently, without the development, the area is all grass and trees, so there would be almost 100% transition to concrete. Shouldn't the expectation of the sale of public land incorporate guidelines in line with the values of the town and the EAB? Secondly, although a traffic generation analysis was done, from what I could find, no formal traffic impact study on the development as a whole. Offices, retail, apartments, and library appear to be available, citing that the LDO threshold of 100 peak hours was not met in the case, rezoning case of 18-REZ-26. According to that, 64 peak hour trips would be added for just .41 acres that were rezoned, which is 58 apartment units, but ignores the total plan, which includes 153 apartment units, not including the 102,000 square foot office space and 34,000 square foot of retail space and the library. So, this would most likely exceed the threshold in its entirety. Additionally, an evaluation of delivery vehicles, moving vehicles, and tractor-trailers that will access the public parking area needs to be included along with passenger vehicles as part of the study. Additionally, I now understand that the TOC has, is crediting the developer $265,000 related to stormwater management and then will continue to pay to process the building's runoff from then on by means of the Downtown Park pond. So, in this case, since there is currently no need for ancillary stormwater management, had the Academy Park stormwater not been incorporated into the Downtown Park, the Academy Park developer would be obligated to manage the stormwaters, the project stormwater per the original stormwater guidelines in perpetuity, also spelled out in the rezoning case, which essentially states that the limit, the stormwater runoff from new development to pre-development site conditions in perpetuity, as well as require that the developer provide ongoing maintenance, protect the quantity, and enhance the quality of stormwater leaving the site in perpetuity. It would appear that if the original zoning called for management of water on site, they should continue to be obligated to follow that plan. And if there are countermeasures to this credit that are being incorporated, these effects, then I think it should be spelled out in the agreement going forward. Some of the potential options according to the EPA stormwater management model that was used include rain gardens, green roofs, cisterns, et cetera, as well as adhering to the accepted recommendations of the EAB. One final note is based on the design of the Academy Park, the development is counter to the greenhouse gas guidelines recently adopted by Town Council, including an increase of footprint of static buildings on the property from the original design of two to three, again, with no plan for greens, infrastructure, green roofs, green walls, additional charging stations, or accommodations for parked delivery trucks. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Mayor Weinberg, members of the council. My name is Rick Stevenson. I'm one of the principals of Academy Park Cary and Academy Park Commercial. As Mr. Boyd has described, the Academy Park Project is our group's vision, is to complement and enhance Cary's efforts over the last several years to make downtown Cary a vibrant area in which to live, work, and play, both for its citizens and those that's busy at Cary. I want to thank the town manager, Sean Stegall, Ted Boyd, the town's attorneys, Chris Simpson and Lisa Glover, and the other town staff and their willingness to work with our group in these negotiations over the last two years. No agreement is perfect. This is a very complex document, but I think all parties have acted in good faith to negotiate agreement that will result in a development in which we can all be proud. I think all the stakeholders, including the town of Cary, have been considered heavily in these negotiations. Our project has been nearly three years in the making. I'm going to give you a little background on the ownership group. The Academy Park entities are owned primarily by three families, the Keneers, the Zahn's, and the Stephenson's, who've lived and worked in Cary for three generations. The town of Cary is home for us and our families and is where Cary, where we decided to build our businesses. In my case, my mother and father came to Cary in the late 1950s to start Cary Oil Company as a home heating oil business serving the citizens of Cary and Wake County. It's been run by my two brothers for the last 30 years, Craig and Don Stephenson. It's now a distributor of motor fuels in about 20 states, but it continues to maintain its, its main office here in Cary. Together with other lawyers, I helped start my own law firm here 20 years ago. These three families are all substantially involved in real estate business, in the real estate development business in different areas of Cary, the Triangle area, and throughout the state of North Carolina. But, Academy Park, the Academy Park Project is something that is special to us, given its prominent location and in particular, the town's investment. The families don't see this as just another real estate development, but part of our larger vision together with the town to make downtown Cary a destination in which we can all be proud. As a kid growing up here in Cary, not far from where we, we are right now, I can vividly remember downtown Cary was a place where its citizens came to purchase everything. There were two grocery stores down here on Chatham Street, and a greater percentage of the population of Cary lived in proximity to downtown, and that's changed over the last few years. We think that this project is part of, a big part of bringing downtown Cary back to its former prominence as an active living and working hub for its citizens and visitors to Cary. Now, we can't make Cary like it was 50 years ago. We know that. But, we can honor, we think we can honor the vision of the town's former leaders like Coca-Booth and Fred Bond, and its longtime business leaders, like people like Ralph Ashworth and Dick Lad, by showing the same vision that they all showed decades ago. Finally, I wanted to applaud the town and its staff for having the vision to create an environment which will hopefully permit projects like Academy Park. The downtown Cary Park, the new library, and the parking deck are all public investments in downtown Cary. Our group's project represents our efforts to match the town's visions, and it's been an honor to work on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else to speak at this public hearing?
Hi, my name is Mary Ann Barso.
Could you move to your left?
Oh.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Mary Ann Barso. I live in the downtown area, so frequently I walk the downtown. I love it here. And I'm so excited about what's happening with the development of the downtown area. And I felt like I needed to make this comment. And of course, it's about the environment because that's so super important. I know you're well aware of the EAB recommendations and the carbon drawdown recommendations, well, that are, will be coming out from the EAB. But, from a realistic standpoint, I love to walk and I love to bike ride, and it is so hot. I know that you want a vibrant downtown community, and the fountain area and this park, the project that we're talking about is designed to bring people to the downtown area and to participate in a lot of events that you hold in the area. But, I found myself avoiding them because it's so hot. So, I'm really hoping that incorporating more of the canopy and the green infrastructure that's recommended would be consideration for this part, including walking down Walnut and Walker. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak at this public hearing? Anyone else to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions, comments or motion.
I have just a couple of questions. The contract is a, for the parking spaces, how long is that contract?
So it's, uh, it's a license agreement. It's 30 years is sort of, and then it has the ability to continue after that because there's a necessary parking requirement for the multifamily within that. So when I say the 225,000 annually, that begins for every, for 30 years. And then there are terms after that 30-year period how we would continue on from that.
So is there a cost of inflation associated with it?
There is.
Okay.
There is, there's costs within that first 30 years and then there's costs associated and the ability to also amend some of the number of spaces as well. We may have different parking, you know, needs or requirements that we have. We may want to think about parking decks differently, so trying to build those in as we go along.
So a lot of the, you know, I hate to stay on the parking, but it, it has been very, of great interest, right? Since we increased the parking when we built this building, this parking deck specifically hoping something like this would, would come to fruition. The, it, it, that 225,000, that's basically associated with the average cost of a month-long parking, right, for like $74?
So what we did is it's, it's $75 a space.
Seventy-five.
Is $75 a space. And then they are, um, they are required to, to pay for all 225 spaces.
Right.
Or 250, sorry. I get the 225 and 250 mixed up. They're very close. But they are required to do all of that, even though the LDO only requires 153 spaces because of the multifamily. They'll use the others for, as, as they see need within the office and retail or additional residential.
Great. Can you also speak to the traffic, the need for the traffic study or not? Curious about that.
I would ask, since I'm not a traffic engineer and I would miss, probably misspoke a little bit, misspeak a little bit, but we are in the mainard and so there are some limitations with when we have that. But I ask Mr. Jensen to please.
Sure. Good evening. Yeah, the, when, when a small portion of the, of the, of the property was rezoned, it didn't qualify enough in our LDO standards for a traffic study, so one wasn't done. But I will tell you, we have been thinking a lot about traffic in this area and that's why we've recommended in our, in our bond intersection improvements that we do some things in this area to make sure that traffic flows well. The site plan itself doesn't require a, a traffic study. So I think we've been pretty, pretty compliant with all our, our code and regulations, but we are thinking about downtown.
I just wanted to offer that since the, the interest in the downtown has increased dramatically over the past year or two especially, we're taking a comprehensive approach not only at the street network and making investments there, more connections, but also planning for additional parking decks. So there is, that's a, a top priority right now and we think that we can make some, we have the expertise in-house to, to make some recommendations about making the network work even better. In addition, so traffic will flow better and there'll be many more places to park.
Also making investments in multimodal and transit and sidewalks and stuff to promote walkability as well. Are you finished? This is exciting. I mean, this is incredibly exciting. I remember back in 2009 at one of our retreats where we kind of planned this whole project out and talking about a library and a deck and, you know, wrapping it with mixed-use development. And at the time, we were talking, you know, 350 some odd space deck and obviously as times have changed and economics and such, we've gotten a little taller and a little bigger, but the overall vision remains the same and a destination's place, a place for people to live, work and play in, in the park and all of that, you know. Gosh, 11 years ago now at this point, as, as far as that part, but you know, as you spoke to earlier, this has been in the works a lot longer than that. Hearing Mr. Stevenson talk about, you know, the, the vision, you know, decades and decades ago, I remember back when I first got involved with the Heart of Cary Association and stuff and, you know, back in 2000, 2002, you know, hearing these same things, you know, people talking about the vision for downtown, creating a destination, getting it back to its, you know, what used to be a place where people wanted to come and, and stay a while and shop and eat and live. And I totally see this project as a catalyst for that. I mean, we're already seeing it, we're already living it, we're already experiencing it. Regarding some of the comments were made, I appreciate the concerns, you know, regarding tree canopy and, and stormwater runoff and impervious surface and stuff, you know, the, the town has spent probably the better part of 10 years acquiring property at this site. The property that the town acquired and then bulldozed that turned into a nice green area, used to be an apartment complex, used to be town homes, used to be single-family homes. So this, yes, so this, this site didn't, used to be as open and green as it was and all that was in preparation for, you know, this project and the downtown park. Folks may or may not know the downtown park, while we have to remove a few trees to construct that, we're actually going to be planting over 400 trees to replace that to...
200% increase.
To not only provide for, you know, stormwater purposes, but shade and green and tree canopy. I mean, that's something that this council has made clear that's terribly important to us and our community. The parking deck is always planned for, to be shared with private development and commercial development. So, and then the, the stormwater device in, in the park is going to serve not only this project, but the park itself and serves an amenity for our citizens, just a beautiful place for people to go and stay a while and enjoy water in the park and everything else around it. So one of my biggest frustrations with government is how slow it moves. I understand there's a reason for that and it's probably a good thing. I think government that moves too fast can probably do more harm than good. But man, this has been a long time coming and it is exciting to finally get here.
Other comments?
I just have a question. Ted, can you address the concerns about the canopy? Kind of just give us some insights hearing, you know, you knowing the project so well and then hearing what the concerns are. Is there something that we've missed as far as the canopy goes? I mean, are we concerned about not having enough coverage, canopy coverage on Walker and Walnut?
Uh, no, I don't think we have any concern. I mean, again, to the, the comments that were just made about replacing tree canopy within the park itself, we will have new trees that will be planted back as a part of the streetscape and they'll need to grow within that, but I don't know that we have any specific concern.
I think Jennifer, it's, um, part of it, there's a lot of focus and cautiousness about trees right now and we're making very concerted efforts to really step up our game in that area and we are, but right now, we're, we are nervous to cut down any tree for fear of sending mixed messages. You know the way social media is, here we are saying we're doing more, we're doing more, then we're going to cut some down and to the, um, to the defense of anyone who thinks that, if you don't know this, it certainly would look that way. So we're just, we're worried that people won't understand it, so we just want to communicate it as much as we can, but by every possible measure, we're doing more for the tree canopy, not less here and throughout Cary.
Yeah, I'd like to echo that. I think, uh, you know, there's, there's a tendency, we, we have Fenton as our largest and we have the mall redevelopment as our second largest, coming on back to back. And, you know, it's just, I think it's the human nature that when you're investing in these new developments, you know, there's going to be earth moved and there's going to be clearing, but if you take it in context with what we're doing to offset that so that in the end, it's a net zero sum gain, I think that's the most important thing. And it was very helpful that you brought up what's going on around Cary because if you look at just, if you just kind of put your blinders on and you just look at this development, you're going to have somebody that's going to say it's the end of the world, we're cutting down a tree and all that, but we're doing so much more. You know, we're doing so much more with the stormwater in the area. We're doing so much more with improving our tree canopy. We, we're in the midst of finishing our tree canopy baseline and it's one of, it's really good news. And the biggest challenge I think we have as a council is not to rest on that, but to continue to grow that canopy, as you said, Sean. That's what we're doing. So if we look at this one development in the aggregate of all that's going on around development, we are doing so much more for the environment and that's coming up in our meetings at the EAB Board and all the other things. So let's just kind of take a deep breath sometimes and make sure that we're looking at the whole thing, the whole picture and we're looking at, you know, that this has been a well-thought-out plan in all aspects, you know, not just the moving of transit and everything else, but that we, you know, we carry our leaders in the environment and we're not going to let any development get in the way. You know, you talked, Don, about, was it 10 years ago, you were excited about all of this, you know, kind of coming to a head. Well, Jennifer, you and I remember 20 years ago is when we kind of thought the idea and what was neat about 10 years ago is we said, we got to quit talking and we got to start doing. And now we're seeing the fruits of that and the nice thing is we've had 10 years to do due diligence, we've had 10 years to really think this thing out and we, so what we're going to have for the people of Cary is a vibrant downtown, environmentally sustainable and a, a, just a damn good place to kind of come and have fun.
Other comments?
Well, I appreciate Mr. Barso's comments and I also appreciate the discussion that's ensued following those comments. I, I think traffic, tree canopy, stormwater, those things are things that are on our mind all the time. And when it comes to this particular project, I don't think this development agreement is the end-all of everything. I would think that as this proceeds, we might keep those things in mind even more than we have at, at this point. So I appreciate those comments. I appreciate Mr. Boyd's history of the park plan and as I look at each of those slides, there's continuous improvement. I was part of the town center area plan back in 2000 and what we have now is a great improvement over what we suggested back 20 years ago. When we work on something, this particular plan for the last couple of years, then we have a development agreement full of legalese, I try to look at it as thoroughly as I can to see if there's something that's going to stand out as a surprise to me, something that's, ooh, we didn't know that over the last two years. And I looked at it as much as I could and I can't find anything that's a surprise. I think it very clearly reflects what we've been discussing for the last couple of years, so I'm, I'm excited about it.
Other comments? If not, we're ready for a motion.
Make a motion that, we're, sorry.
Go ahead, go, go, go.
Make a motion that we move forward with the, do you want something specific with the, yes?
Ms. Bush, how about accept staff's recommendation to adopt the resolution and appropriate the funds as...
What she said.
Sounds good.
Sure. There's a motion.
Second.
And the second.
That's why I wasn't going to do it.
I was like, how hard could it be? Oh.
Further discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. How exciting. Thank you, Mr. Boyd.
Thank you.
We have no discussion items this evening. We have no closed session this evening, so our business has concluded. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries and we are adjourned.